This is the time for public comment. This is the time when anyone can approach the board on something that is not on the agenda, keeping in mind we can take no action. So if there's anyone who'd like to address the board on something not on the agenda, please come forward and state your name. Ron.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ron McIntyre. I live in Goldfield in Comstock. I'd just like to have the Board of Supervisors know that most of us think that your Department of Public Works snowplow operation this winter, under very dire circumstances, did a hell of a job, and we really appreciate it. So if you'd pass that on for some of us, I'd appreciate it.
Make it pretty much Ron. Appreciate it. Is there anyone else who'd like to address the board on something not on the agenda? Did you hear that, Peter? They didn't get you a makeup room?
Anyway, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I wasn't expecting necessarily to talk to the entire board, but I can do it anyway. I was going to talk with Supervisor Montgomery about the Tahoe courthouse project. We had a meeting today with representatives of the AOC and our project advisory group, which is comprised of community members and myself and our CEO. And we're in the site selection phase of still this project. But we are going to, just so you know where we are, we're going to ask the two representatives of the AOC, Mary Simons and also, I'm sorry, Peggy Simons and Mary Bustamante, to meet with Jake and your staff, Mr. Durfee and Mary Dietrich, so that we can try as best we can to coordinate our efforts so that we could co-locate, you know, a possible sheriff's office, substation, perhaps DA's office probation at the location that the state AOC is looking to, or the possible sites that AOC is looking to, to build a courthouse. It's a long process. The building of a courthouse under Senate Bill 1407 several years ago, it's a fairly long and involved process. And the law that set this process up does not allow for a partnership or joint venture. However, we hope to, by meeting with Mary and Jim, to kind of get them up to speed in terms of the timing of all this. We have, they're in the process of contracting with Williams and Patton to do the architectural and the drawings and some of the preparation. So I just wanted to let Supervisor Montgomery know that, and I guess at this point, the rest of you and Mr. Miller, your CEO, so that we can try to coordinate as best we can so that your planning process can go in kind of an organized fashion. Hopefully, we can end up with the end result, which I think will be a benefit to the taxpayers and the people of this region to have a kind of one spot to go to for criminal justice needs. So that was it. I'm almost out of time.
Thank you so much. Because I can enjoy the last minute of this report.
Thank you.
Thanks, Alan. Is there anyone else who'd like to address the board on something not on the agenda? Please come forward and state your name. Okay, so a closed public comment, and we will move to our just added item, the resolution ratifying the proclamation of local emergency. And Tom, who's going to?
Rui, there you are. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Before I get started, I want to acknowledge Fire Chief Bob Benner from the Truckee Fire Protection District, who's here in the audience, Bob, and then also Lieutenant Wayne Wu from our Sheriff's Department, both of which have been incident command for a period of time throughout this. Truckee in particular, who's contributed significant resources and efforts to this item that's before you right now. And to be honest, they have done a great job of protecting public safety in the Serene Lakes area on behalf of our joint residents. The item before you asks that you adopt a resolution ratifying the proclamation of local emergency made on April 8, 2011, by the Assistant Director of Emergency Services due to propane leaks experienced since late March in eastern Placer County with specific focus on Serene Lakes. However, the proclamation, as it is a county proclamation, will cover the other areas of the county that may experience either today or in the future additional issues, depending on the decision of your board. I briefed your board on April 5 as it related to this specific issue, so I'm going to, I'm not going to get into a lot of the details there, but certainly will entertain any questions that you may have. But suffice it to say that with the significant snow loading that we've experienced this year, there have been extraordinary weight placed on, in particular, the plumbing that basically goes from propane tanks into the wall of a residence. And that weight, we believe, based on the best data that we have to date, is contributing significantly to these leaks. The snow is not getting any lighter. It's actually getting heavier as it melts, and so that's contributing even further to this issue. On Friday, April 8, while the Board of Supervisors was not in session, and in consideration of the ongoing leaks that we have experienced in the Serene Lakes area, and in consideration of an explosion to a residence within the Serene Lakes area, we decided, in consultation with the Sheriff's Office as well as Truckee Fire Protection District, to proclaim a local emergency. That local emergency is extended for seven days, subject to the action of your board. With your ratification, that will extend the local emergency for the next 30 days, at which point it must come back to your board in order to be extended even further beyond that point. Environmental Health is currently tracking 27 properties in eastern Placer County that have or have had propane leaks. The majority of those, 25, are in fact in the Serene Lakes area. Eight total properties have been remediated to date, so there's still plenty of work to do. Most of the property owners that we're working with have been cooperative. We are, however, working with County Council and Environmental Health to develop a compulsory abatement protocol that would allow Environmental Health to order abatement on a property due to the extreme public safety risk that exists with propane on any given property. And that protocol would be signable by the County Executive Officer with your proclamation today. So subject to any questions that you might have, I'll be happy to answer any questions and certainly would defer to Chief Benner as well as Lieutenant Wu if it's in those areas.
Thanks, Rui. Are there any questions or comments?
No. Rui, I just wanted to clarify the process, Emergency Services, and thank you again for jumping on this and working with Truckee and also the Sheriff's Office to take this quick action. So basically, you're just asking us to ratify the emergency proclamation that you took this weekend and extend it 30 days?
That is correct.
Okay.
So just like to point out for any members of the audience who haven't been following this or any of my fellow board members, it's not just Serene Lakes that's been having problems. Alpine Meadows had some identified problems. The west shore of Lake Tahoe had some identified problems. So we do have representatives here from both North Star Fire and from North Tahoe Fire. And I believe North Star has dodged a bullet to date, but I know North Tahoe Fire has been impacted potentially through some of these same or similar issues. And this, if I understand it, opens them up to the possibility of recouping some of their costs as well. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Is there anyone from the public who'd like to address this issue? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
I move we adopt a resolution ratifying the proclamation of local emergency made on April 8, 2011, by the Assistant Director of Emergency Services due to propane leaks experienced since late March in eastern Placer County centered on the Serene Lakes community.
Seconded to adopt the just discussed resolution, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
We will next take up our first department item. County Exec Amgen Tour. And who's going to?
I think Ron's actually going to start with that.
Thank you very much, Mr. Miller. Welcome to North Lake Tahoe again for one of your quarterly meetings, of which you usually attend three of here at the north shore. And it's always a pleasure to have you come up here and really give the people of North Lake Tahoe that opportunity to speak to you. It does help with our, this item that I am talking about today too, because the heat that you usually bring on will help some of this snow melt off the road so that the Amgen Tour of California can take place. This is the, my name is Ron Tribas. I'm the interim Executive Director of the North Lake Tahoe Association Chamber of Commerce. Within a couple of weeks, I will have interim removed from my title, as well as Executive Director, removed from my title, in that the Board of Directors of the Resort Association has successfully come up with an agreement with Ms. Sandy Evans-Hall from Steamboat Springs to come up and resume being the CEO and Executive Director of both of those organizations. And we look forward to her. She's a spark and a very sharp person. Again, before Robert tells me, I'm out of order talking outside this item. She's arriving on Amgen Weekend, so I thought it was appropriate to throw that out here. The Resort Association, this year in particular, emphasized the need to try to put on more events. We have promoted events, we have encouraged events, but to be more involved with events that specifically could take place in our shoulder seasons to where we could increase the economic sustainability of those times, put more of those infamous heads on beds, and be a definite part of it in ourselves versus, again, just providing some funds or encouragement to others. So the Resort Association has stepped forward through our Director of Tourism, Andy Tourism, Andy Chapman, and working with South Shore to bring the Tour of California here and to Placer County, not just for the start, not just for the first day's finish, not just for the start of the second day's finish, and then the third day's start, of course, in the Auburn area. But so that Placer County will now be involved in the first three stages of the eight-stage race that takes place throughout all of California. And I think that's a real feather in your guys' cap, because I know you've helped us with your approval of funding and approval of our mission to be able to put forth about $100,000 into the marketing of this, as well as tomorrow, we have an item before you for $75,000 to help us prematurely, to normal, clear the bike paths so that the people coming up here will have an opportunity to follow the race as it goes around the north end of the lake here. So with that, I'd like to definitely bring up Andy Chapman, who has been, as I say, one of the coordinators, the two coordinators for the whole Lake Tahoe portion of this bike race, and even helping to get the marketing done for getting it from Squaw Valley down to Sacramento, and who has involved all of our other business associations and organizations into being a definite part of making North Lake Tahoe a welcoming spot for all of the people that will be coming up. And he'll show you why it's going to be a great presentation up here. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Ron. And thanks, the Board of Supervisors, for the opportunity to be in front of you today. I think we discussed this with you earlier on when we were in the midst of bidding on this process. So we're very happy that we are about 33 days away from this thing actually being accomplished up here. Just a little bit about the race itself. It is owned by Ashwire Entertainment Group, which is a large entertainment and sports company out of Los Angeles. They've ran this for the last six years with their title sponsor, Amgen Pharmaceutical. And Amgen is involved with their cancer curing drugs, which is why they're involved in this race. And I'll speak a little bit about that in a few minutes. AEG ran this race in May for the first five years, four years, sorry, four years. They moved it for three reasons. One, they wanted to get away from the weather that was plaguing certainly the northern California side in February. And two, the ability to come up to the higher regions of the state, which of course is important. And three, and probably most important for the organizers, is it now competes directly with the Tour of Italy, the Giro, which is a grand tour, a three-week race. This has now become the second most important race in the industry behind the Tour de France. It's the last training ground, and it's the last place that the riders are sent and the teams are sent to be trained and ready to go for that main race. What we did about 18 months ago, we started working with the organizers of this race, with our partners on the south shore, the Lake Tahoe Visitors Authority and our counterparts down there, because they really wanted to see a single bid come from this region. They didn't want competing bids and really wanted to highlight this area as a single destination, which from an international perspective, it certainly is. So we started working with them about 18 months ago. About 50 cities bid on this, Auburn being one of those successful bidders as well. So as Ron mentioned, we're happy that we got the very high percentage of these stages for the eight days here in Placer County. And then those were awarded back in October. They did the award. So just a little bit about the race itself, if my pointer works here. It is the largest cycling event in North America, and as I mentioned, the second most important race in the industry right now. And it is an international world-class race. I like to relate cycling to soccer, where it is way more popular internationally than it is domestically. And the amount of international exposure and certainly domestic exposure that will get out of this is going to be huge. There are athletes from 27 countries, and we actually have 19 eight-member teams now. They added a couple of teams that they definitely wanted to get in on that. 42 hours of broadcast during the eight-day period, and it's internationally broadcast over 200 countries and in 20 different languages. The international broadcast period starts at between 2:00 and 4:00 o'clock, or runs between 2:00 and 4:00 o'clock each day. They will shoot B-roll throughout the day, throughout the start, the different climbs that I'll talk about here in a moment. And then they'll piece those together at the TV compound. That's a short walking distance from here, as we know this is the finish of the stage one. 2 million onsite spectators, 400 million in economic impact overall in the state. And then, as you see on the bottom there, all of the world-class athletes. We do still have Lance Armstrong on there. He did retire, but he has done that before. So, you know, we have, he has 33 days. Maybe he wants to come back. But we do have all the top riders coming in. Kind of one of the reasons why we, as the Resort Association, from a tourism perspective, wanted to do this, it's really some of these cycling demographics that we see. This is a huge participatory sport. 65 million folks in the cycling industry that are active in that industry, 5.3 billion spent on bikes, very nice percentage of male, female that are in this, because as I think many of us know, the females of the household really make the vacation decisions. And it's important to have them interested in the sport, because this is a vacationing demographic. They'll come up here and spend their leisure time. Very tech savvy, online purchases, and kind of down to the bottom of that page there, you know, they're cycling road bikes at $3,500. So these aren't cheap bikes. These aren't little, you know, junky bikes that they're rolling around. These guys live the industry and breathe the industry. There is a local organizing committee structure in place. I am the LOC Chair from the north shore, and my counterpart, Carol Chaplin, from the LTVA, is the co-chair on the south shore side. And there's about nine technical committees underneath of us. And each one of those committees are jointly chaired between a north shore representative and a south shore representative. And depending on what that expertise is, we've got the right people in. So we've got a lot of horsepower behind this. LOC have been meeting really since about August, twice a month, and we've been moving those to weekly meetings now as we get a little bit closer to the event. Just a quick thank you to some of our sponsors that have come onboard as well. We did sign Corbell Champagne as our presenting sponsor with a cash and product sponsorship, which is great, because you need champagne at a bike race. Barton Hell, Sacramento Airport, and there are a few others that have signed on since this slide has been put in. And then our lodging partners. We could not do this race without the assistance and support of our lodging community. We have to comp 700 room nights on a single night, Sunday, up here in the North Lake Tahoe area to the organizers. And they're not concerned whether we get them comped or we have to pay for them, but they don't. But our community has come forward and comped every single room that we needed. It's about 1,000 beds and 700 room nights. And South Lake Tahoe did the same thing. They needed 1,600 room nights down there, because they're down there for two days leading up to the start of the race. So our community has really stepped up and supplied what we needed. Our media sponsors, if I can get that to go forward, our media sponsors, again, important to get media sponsors involved so we don't have to pay out of our marketing funds to get this message out. KRNV, our main TV sponsor out of Reno, the NBC Network will be carrying a lot of information about this race, as are some of the local organizations that you see there. Just a quick little snapshot of what this race looks like on the eight-day period. It starts on May 15 in South Lake Tahoe and will end eight days later at Thousand Oaks, home of the Amgen Pharmaceutical Company. Kind of funny how they got the finish there. Eight days later on May 22. So the stage for the stage one, as I mentioned, does start in South Lake Tahoe. There's one way around the lake. There's a big guess when they release that, and you go around the lake. It will go around one and a half times. It'll come up over 267 after it goes through Kings Beach a second time, and it'll end about 1,000 yards from here, just down at the end of the road here. So this area will become biking central. There'll be tents all set around for the Lifestyle Festival, which are all of the sponsors that come in and all of their participants that go with this tour for the eight days. And that starts at about 11:00 o'clock. So there'll be a lot going on with the TVs showing the screens of the shots as the racers are going around the lake itself. A little bit on the elevation gain. This shows you the different elevation. The organizers don't think this is really a technically difficult race. There's not a huge elevation, but it starts fairly high. It starts at 6,000 feet, which is, for this race, it's always started a little bit closer to sea level. So you've got Emerald Bay first there on the slide, you've got Spooner, Emerald Bay again, and then Brockway being the final climb for that day. The race for, or the race course for stage two, kind of hard to see there, it's a confusing map, but it does start at Squaw Valley. It'll come down 89 after what's called a neutral start through Squaw. Well, they'll take a couple of loops, parade loops, so to speak, and then head down Donner Lake and up and over for the first King of the Mountain climb, which is the summit of Donner Summit there, which is going to be a fantastic viewing area. And we know Jennifer Montgomery is working with the folks up there, and it's going to be a great place to watch the race. And it'll go downhill from there to Sacramento. And looking at the elevation map, it definitely does that. So these guys will be racing very quickly in stage two, but it's a long stage, about 133 miles. I'm not going to show the route announcement videos. I don't think we have time to do that. I would just encourage you to go to the Tahoe Tour of California website. We did have the opportunity to create not only announcements when the host cities were announced, but then route announcements. Each time AEG goes out with new information, we get a huge amount of press. That press is always driving back to our combined website with South Shore and then over to our GoTahoe North website as well. The 10-day countdown to the tour, there is just a lot going on. We're kicking this off on Cinco de Mayo. This is just a smattering of the activities to really build a 10-day period of excitement built around this bike race. As you get closer to the weekend itself, kind of the core weekend, on Friday the 13th, there's the gala and team presentation down at Mont Blue on South Shore, which is where the teams are announced and presented to the world, a black tie type event, which is really the big kickoff. All the international press will be there as well. Saturday, there is a ride the course race, at least the first lap. We're going to only put those guys through the pain of one lap around the lake that want to do that, but it is a participation ride where you can buy into that piece and ride with the legends of Tahoe racing. And then obviously, the start of day one, finish up here at North Star, and then equally important, the start of day two at Squaw Valley, and then the start of day three at Auburn. I can't let that, I just don't have that in this particular slide, but. So a little bit about breakaway from cancer. Obviously, this is why Amgen is involved. Four of the host cities were selected to be part of this breakaway from cancer walk, and Tahoe was one of them. We just, they just finished a nomination period of about 30 days where cancer champions, cancer advocates, cancer survivors, or cancer caregivers were nominated as kind of a local champion. That nomination period will then end in a local vote for people to vote who their local champion is. That champion then will lead a walk of cancer, again, cancer survivors, advocates, and caregivers the last mile of the course, about an hour before the racers finish up here. And then that champion also gets to award the yellow jersey to the winner of stage one. And again, this is one of the main reasons why Amgen is involved. It's a great opportunity for us up here, working with our partnerships of the Tahoe Forest Hospital Foundation and their new cancer wing that they're bringing in. So it's a great opportunity just to celebrate that whole side of that issue. I think we can skip that one. I think I said all that. So a little bit on the marketing plan. We've been underway with phase one, which is really to talk to everybody who is coming to Tahoe during this winter season, make sure they are aware of this race coming in. We have a somewhat captive audience of hundreds of thousands of folks who ski here during the winter season, and it's a great crossover to this industry. So we've been out there really supporting and pushing that element. Really starting in April 1, phase two, is really going off the hill, going off the mountain into Sacramento, into the Bay Area, and into Los Angeles to drive that visitation up here, to get the people to come up here and stay overnight. And we're well on our way with those couple of opportunities. Public relations, obviously, one of the main reasons why we do this is to get our name out there. Every time Amgen is mentioned, Lake Tahoe gets mentioned because of the start application. We've been underway getting these information, this information out. And again, that's, when we do the reports on the PR value that we get out of this race, it's going to be astronomical. It'll be one of the best ones that we've had. Opportunities for local organizations. We've been working with all of our local organizations to create calendars and events on that calendar to make sure people are taking advantage of this. As Ron mentioned, working with our infrastructure and transportation side and through our board and the board supervisors to make sure our bike paths are clear and accessible. It's going to be important, particularly given this winter that we have had. So we're really working to make sure that Tahoe's going to put on the best face that we can for this international event. And that is just a snapshot of the website. And with that, I just, again, want to thank you, and I'm sure in the spirit of the race coming up, you all rode your bikes here today, so I do appreciate that as well. And I can answer any questions, but again, just want to thank you for your support.
We appreciate, Andy, your willingness to change your name to Tourism from Chaplin. Jennifer?
Andy, there are two questions that always come up, so I'm just going to raise them straight off, so the rest of the board doesn't have to ask them. Traffic control and weather, what are our plans for both of those pieces?
Traffic control, the first one. The way this race works and has worked for the six years or five years prior to this is it's a rolling closure. It's about a 15 to 20-minute rolling closure. The organizers are fairly confident this is going to be a tight pack, almost to the end, both on day one, day two. As anybody's familiar with bike riding, it's not a ride, it's a race. So these guys stay together, the peloton stays together. CHP is the lead organization. We're working closely with our law enforcement partners. Sergeant Ingles in the back is helping us from a Placer County perspective as well. NHP, CHP, El Dorado, City of South Lake Tahoe, Truckee, all the law enforcement have been involved from the start. Certainly, there will be closures, but again, they're minimized. They're 15 to 20 minutes, certainly at the beginning of the race for day two. There won't be much at all on 89, and then once they're up and over through the top of Donner Summit and gone. So there's going to be boards out, certainly, that talk about that, the message boards. There's a communication plan that will be pushed out to make sure people understand what those impacts are going to be, and again, to minimize those as much as we can.
There will be, however, just so everyone's aware of it, there will be probably a 20-minute to half an hour closure on Interstate 80 between Cisco Grove and Highway 20, is my understanding.
I'm not sure it'll be quite that long, but it's, because it's a short distance. It's only about three miles as they come off on that fronted road. It's about 3.7 miles. And they will be, what they'll do is they'll, from what I understand, the CHP will come in and... And what they'll do is, from what I understand, the CHP will come in and stop it until everybody gets on, and then they'll just move slowly behind until everybody peels off. But yeah, there will be a time period when they do delay that traffic. I understand, working from the Caltrans perspective, there's already work going on up there, so there's only one road available, and they might even run the racers on the other side. So some of that is still being under discussion. The weather piece, my crystal ball is a little fuzzy, but these guys do race in all weather. This came up at one of the meetings, and they sent the link from the 2003 Italy race where it was pouring snow and sleet and rain, and they're going, they race. They may delay, depending on what goes on, scrape the roads off if they need to, wait till the sun comes out. In May, typically, it is a little bit warmer, but I don't think this winter's been typical. There is no interior alternative for this race. So yes, there are plans in place. Worst-case scenario, they pack up and they move down the road. But knock on wood, that's not happening here. It's going to be a beautiful blue day.
Thank you.
Tom? Just want to mention that, if we didn't have the Resort Association, I don't think we'd have this race coming here. Andy spoke to the necessity to comp, and there's also meals that have to be provided and manpower, and as was kind of glossed over, but it's on your agenda for tomorrow. Dollars put forward to patching potholes, to opening up bike paths, sweeping many of those facilities that we usually let the sun open up and make sure they're, but there's funding that's being provided, and they've gone definitely out of their way. The business associations or the restaurants that they represent are putting special menus to recognize the race day and have special venues. So this is a huge effort by all of the business entities in North Lake and the various community organizations, but under the leadership of the Resort Association. I just don't see how you could pull it off unless you had an organization of competency like the Resort Association. They've been working very closely with all county staff in all the different capacities.
Thank you. And we really look at this as being probably one of the, if not the biggest thing to come to this region since the 1960 Winter Olympics, if you relate it to that exposure, that opportunity that this region will have, and that message that goes out to the world.
Any questions coming? Thank you, Andy. Congratulations to all of us, and thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Okay, next item is an update on the county biomass program.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Board of Supervisors. Pleasure to be here. Brett Story, Planning Services Division. Going to get kind of a two-part today. I'm going to talk about the overall program and some of the things that have been going on, and then Jerry Haas is going to follow me up with some specifics about the process of the proposed facility. Next slide. We've been fortunate, and we've been able to get a lot of money from the Placer County Air Pollution Control District Clean Air Grant Program, and just a little bit of what we've done in the last year. Progress was slowed a little bit. Loyleton went down. Carson City actually is no longer a facility. We hope one day that Loyleton will get back on, but that required us to take our biomass material much further out. We were able to take some to Loyleton before it shut down, much of it to Quincy, and some of it even as far as Honey Lake. But we were able to do at least one project for the California State Parks. We have a partnership with them to try to remove that fuel from parks. The North Tahoe Fire Protection District, we did a number of projects with them where places in the wild urban interface, wildland urban interface were cleared out. Pine needle programs, we were able to take that material as well and take that to, again, those facilities I talked about. I'm pleased to announce we were given an award notification for this year to get a new grant, which hopefully two of our members here will be approving Thursday at the Placer County Air Pollution Control District Board Meeting, a $35,000 grant to work with Dwayne Whitelaw and his organization for some valuable dollars. They were looking at the end of their program of chipping and hauling the chips. We were able to get this money so we can keep that program going for them. It's a two-year program, and we think that will just about cover everything up in their region, which also includes out in Alpine Meadows and out that way as well as within the basin. We were also fortunate, and we were able to clean up two or three of the county urban parcels that are near homes. And I know that's a desire for the supervisors to get all of our property cleared up. So we had a mixture of funds with this and some work with North Tahoe Fire to make sure that we're starting to clean those up. Next slide, a little bit about our Department of Energy grant progress. We've been able to produce four reports to date. The first one, and I have a little bit of information that I'll go over after this front page, a fuel procurement plan, essentially understanding where the biomass would come from over a long term if a facility were built in the area. A logistics plan documenting how the material would be acquired, how it would be moved, and how it would be stored. We completed a siting analysis for a small-scale combined heat and power in the Lake Tahoe Basin, which evaluated some of the economics and other benefits of several different sites, which will roll into our decision should we decide to proceed forward. And finally, an air and water emissions and carbon credits, emissions offsets analysis report. That was the shortened version, by the way. Tom Kristoff helped in the design of that name. Essentially, we were doing a number of analyses determining the ability of a facility and the technology to meet local, state, and federal regulations as it relates to air and water emissions as well as the new emerging carbon program. And this next one, just a little bit from the fuel assessment report. A lot of people are asking, where's this going to come from? Excuse me. These will all be new sources. This is not current material that's ever taken to anywhere else. Almost all of it is still on the ground. It's either piled and burned, or it's massacated. So one of the issues we looked at is what can we do to help alleviate this material from its current fate? And you see on there just a little bit of the technology. If we were to choose one of the technologies, the report states that we can get about 80% of the material needed for a 2-megawatt plant from the basin itself, and another 20% of just forest waste from Cabin Creek. There will be nothing other than forest waste for this facility. And if we choose the gasification technology, it would be 100%. And you just see there a circle with a 20-mile radius, and the, I'm not sure what alien creature that is, but that's a 40-minute drive time. And I also wanted to note that while the Forest Service would be the majority of this material, I've also listed North Tahoe Fire Protection District, but that's really just to show you representative of all the fire districts. They're all interested in providing this material. And then, as well as the Tahoe Conservancy symbol there, as well as state parks and a number of other organizations are anxious to, are eager to be able to put this work together with us should we get that far. Next slide is just a little bit about the economics of what we're finding out from all the reports leads into the ability to make this a sustainable operation. And we're not there yet. We haven't done all the work, but this is just a little bit. Again, that 20-mile local biomass reduces the cost tremendously. We're not getting ourselves into a position like a Loyleton where they've got to go as way as 100 and 200 miles. Diesel costs fluctuate quite a bit, and then you have shortages based on what's going on. So we're looking at just the local. We're also developing cost-sharing agreements with all the local agencies. Again, should we move forward with a facility, we will put those in place. And that's just taking a look at what's already being accomplished by agencies up here and not redoing that, but utilizing, if they've chipped the material already, or if they're able to haul the material, we're looking at lowering the cost between both of us so that we can make this work. The green energy requirement for the power company is actually quite big, and as you know, the governor signed another item that will get us to somewhere on 33% renewable energy. That has to come from somewhere, and it's going to come from a mix of things. So each power company does need green energy, and there is a premium for it. And then the fact that we're working with that private partner makes this not only affordable to us, but it proves out the economics theory, once we get to that point, that they're certainly not going to go into an adventure for a biomass facility unless it pencils out, and they're taking all of these studies into account as well as their own experts. A little bit about the green power. Typically, that's anywhere from 13 to 15 cents a kilowatt. We've already been able to shave the price down to a lot of these cost-sharing and local biomass to about the 9, 10 cent range. We have a personal goal to get it lower, but at this point, this is all my technology people would let me say there. And I will also let you know that 2 megawatts of electricity, a lot of people have questioned, why are you building such a small plant? That can possibly be a lot. Well, there's a number of reasons why the size is appropriate, not the least of which is that's the amount of material that's here locally, and there's a lot of other good benefits out of it. But it serves, 2-megawatt continuously running facility would serve around 1,000 homes in a 24-by-7, 365 basis. So while it is a significant investment, it's also a significant amount of power, particularly for the area up here, which has no current generation within the basin. It all comes in Nevada. The next slide, you've seen before, but I wanted to point out that we're actually refining the work we're doing here based on actual studies, some of them done here in the Tahoe Basin and surrounding areas. But what we're starting to break out now is the types of technologies. And what we're seeing as well, I've brought to you in the past that we've gotten 96 and 90%, things like that, reduction in many of these emissions. We're starting to see that between the two technologies we're looking at, there is differences in them. Some, for example, NOx, it's much more reduction of a gasification technology for NOx, which is critical up here in the basin. There's a slightly higher in particulate matter, but it's really still a 97 or 98% reduction. So my whole goal here is just to let you know that we are looking at this, and we are looking at it with technology in mind that we would propose, again, if we decide to move forward. The next slide is a little bit about the projects we're going to be accomplishing this summer should the snow melt and the Amgen Tour get started. We'll be available to do some work. First and foremost, with the Forest Service, we've got a number of projects planned, a number of small sites that are in the Placer County region. We've also got a demonstration project near Spooner, which is, cover your ears, in the state of Nevada. But it's paid for with funds outside of the counties. It's a combination of Forest Service funding and some funding from the Air Pollution Control District. The nice thing about it, if we can pull it off, there's still some determination of whether it's economically feasible or not, and I'm working with the Forest Service and the contractor to determine that. But it's really looking at a project that is in a steep slope area. And that's significant up here because right now, there just is no economic way nor environmental way to do it. We have some equipment that can pass the environmental. This test would be about the economics to see if it's worth progressing forward. If it's not, then once and for all, or at least for now, we can say that's not where we want to go. We just want to stay in the areas. I want to stress that these areas are not needed for the 2 megawatts. This is just extra material that right now gets burned on slopes, so we're just looking to test out some theories. With state parks, again, we have a project at Sugar Pine Point where we did last year, and we have, that actually faces the homes right on, even though it's in the El Dorado County line, it's the backside of a majority of homes in the Rubicon-McKinney areas of Placer County homes. We also have a big project in Burton Creek. There's been a lot of material that's been staged there, and it's time to get rid of it, so we're going to haul it out rather than state park burning it. We also have some Tahoe Conservancy projects on several urban lots. There are foresters trying to determine which lots they would like to take. Again, we have grant money for all of these. With the North Tahoe Fire Protection District, again, I've already commented, we're going to be assisting them with their chipping program, hauling, and the pine needle removal again, and other projects that are on their priority list. And then just because we're nice, the fire chief at Meeks Bay is very progressive in the way he does business, and we try to help Chief Pang out, and as long as he can bring it to the Placer County side, we'll haul it for him. And it's still reduction and burning, so we're happy helping him out. This next slide, I'm happy to announce, and some of you may have already known this, that the United States Environmental Protection Agency has notified us, the four partners, the U.S. Forest Service, Placer County, Placer County Air Pollution Control District, and Sierra Pacific Industries, for a 2010 Clean Air Excellence Award for Forest Resource Sustainability in Placer County. And what I thought was unique for them is they looked at a lot of different processes, and we actually have one that's continuing over time, year after year, and providing consistent results. And you'll see, their words were, they chose it for its impact, its innovation, its replicability. And if you know anything about the EPA, one of their swear words, as they use it, is you have to be able to repeat the process, and you have to be able to prove it out scientifically that you are in fact reducing emissions in your area for them to have any credibility with it. And on June 7th in Washington, DC, there's going to be an awards ceremony. Each of the partners is sending a representative. We're going to be represented by Supervisor Holmes. And it's, I think, very exciting times as your direction as a board has led us to this effort. And on behalf of the biomass team, and there are a lot of us, we do appreciate your support, and we find that this is something that's helped the citizens, and we hope to continue doing this. And I will stop here. If you have any questions of me, or I can turn it over.
Questions? Jack?
Presentation. Also, congratulations on your recent award that you received here in the region. With regards, and I'm going back to your slide on biomass fuel, the boiler steam technology and gasification. Who's charged with making that determination? Is that a consultant? Is that your office? And I guess, what's the methodology being used? Is it a combination of all the factors that you just talked about, sustainability, technology, fee structure, logistics? And again, should we propose, we'll bring all that data back to you. But for the moment, the gasification and boiler steam technology, we hired TSS, which is a foremost technology evaluation company in the area. They're the ones that did the report and determined, and they've actually gone twice now in the last three years out with a, not an RFP, because we're not buying anything, but an RFI to show us what technology any particular company might have. We sent out all of the specifications for both the county and TRPA, and told them they must meet these specifications, provide possibilities in order to do that. All of those companies, I think in the end, we had about 11, brought all that material back. They've evaluated it, and there's everything in there from their emissions to how much efficiency they have. And then the other gentleman from TSS did the fuel assessment report that determined how much material was here and where we'd be getting that material. So those two are blended, and that is their estimate at this point in time of what those technologies would take. We also hired, along with TRPA, to do a joint EIR, EISEA from Ascent, and Ascent is evaluating that data, along with working with the Air Pollution Control District to understand how it works, the efficiency of each, and they will come out here pretty soon. I think Jerry may speak to that with a report on what the emissions mean. Later on down the line, just to follow the thought for you, if it, again, if we propose something and the board accepts it, we must also get a permit from the Air Pollution Control District. The Air Pollution Control District would do an independent review of one or more technology, actual specific units, and they would have to permit it based on not only their rules, but on TRPA rules. And we actually asked them to take a look at Washoe County rules as well. Turns out that Washoe County rules are identical to Placer County rules because it would affect Washoe County as well. So I hope that answered your question.
No, it did. Thank you very much.
One of your slides indicates that progress was slowed down due to Loyleton and Carson City facility shutdowns in 2010. I know Carson City is shut completely at this point with no expectation of ever reopening.
You can buy pieces of it.
It's available. Great. No thanks. Loyleton, is it closed right now?
Currently, it is. I've had discussions with people who sell to Loyleton. I've had discussions with SBI who owns it, and I've had discussions with Calpico who owns, I guess, half of the contract for that power. I have not received an answer that would lead me to believe it's going to open tomorrow. I think all parties are interested in making it work. There are, however, economic negotiations that would have to move forward, and you'd have to ask them. I think ultimately, it would open back up, but it might be sold before it would. I just don't know.
Okay. And then two follow-up questions relating to Loyleton. How old is that plant?
You know, I don't exactly know. I believe it was, I want to say, built in the 80s.
Okay. And then what is the closest currently operating biomass facility to the Tahoe area?
Is that by miles, by diesel fuel costs, by where the truck drivers live? I mean, literally, all those things.
How about by miles?
You know, it maybe could even be Rio Bravo, Rockland, or SBI Lincoln, particularly because it's downhill and the heavy, I mean, again, that all factors into there. I know that our Cabin Creek facility asked for and received a permit. I know that our Cabin Creek facility asked for and received a permit to actually take their material to SBI Lincoln. And the, and the ability to do that is because they're going to sort it into forest waste only. And like they would need to do if we built a facility up here. So that progress has been made. Generally though, it's, it's a little tougher to deal. The market's a little bit different down there. I'd say the contractor we have up here has the ability to take to Quincy and Honey Lake. And it really just depends almost on the week, what the price is, and they do their own economics.
But it's, it's over 100 miles?
No, no, that would be round trip. No. Gosh, I can't think of the miles off the top of my head. I don't think it's quite 100, but it's close.
I know it's 60 from Donner Summit to Auburn.
Yeah, so it probably is. Yeah, okay. I just drove that today. I should know that.
Yes, you should.
Did it about four stops.
I noticed on your map where we're talking about where will these sources come from, you identify Kings Beach as the, the center of this 20-mile radius?
That's what our analysis was done on. However, the analysis in the logistics report, actually you can take any of the four sites. It's an Excel spreadsheet. So you can do an analysis based on any of the sites.
And are we doing, so we do have that analysis based on all the sites that are proposed?
Yes, I asked the contractor to put that tool together and we have sent that to Ascent to perform in the environmental work. We are not doing the work. They are.
Right, understood. On this green energy requirement, as it relates specifically to energy produced in the basin, or not produced in the basin, because we don't produce any, but used in the basin, when is the current source of most of the electricity in the basin and at Cabin Creek?
100% of the electricity for the basin comes from, well, Calpico at this point, but it's, it's actually, some of it is imported from Envy Energy. It is 100% fossil fuel. The Envy Energy sent us, we requested the, the breakdown of it. It is approximately 67% coal and then a variety, mostly natural gas of the rest of it. So we would be replacing, and I honestly don't know how many megawatts comes up here because I wasn't interested in it. But we, the, the green energy requirement for Calpico and us would be, the two megawatts we're creating, we'd actually get renewable energy credits for that. And it would displace two megawatts of the electricity, which is why you saw on that one chart that we would actually have greenhouse gas offsets because we are actually displacing fossil fuel. And as a matter of fact, gasification, the reason gasification is higher in that is because gasification is a more efficient energy. So it will take less, it will take less fuel, which is why you see the 100% gasification versus the 80, 20. It simply takes less fuel to produce the same amount of power.
And then just, your goal of nine to 10 cents per kilowatt. I got a smart meter recently. I'm serviced by-
Lucky you.
PG&E, yeah. And it's, it's been a great experience tracking that energy. I highly recommend anyone who has a smart meter to do it. We're charged 14 cents a kilowatt hour on Donner Summit. So I frankly would be happy with nine to 10 cents if it were coming to you.
Well, remember, this is the power purchase agreement price of what it costs, not all of the regulatory fees and service fees that are added on top of that. That 14 cents, I think is about four to six cents to create.
Okay. And then I think my last question on this is, under planned projects in the Tahoe region, 2011, other biomass removals apart from Meeks Bay, more urban county lots. I know in the past, the Bay County area on Donner Summit, Nevada County, and Placer County have had a green waste drop-off resulting in a substantial pile of forest waste. That looks from your map like it's within this 40-minute area.
I think it is, yes.
Would that potentially be an area that-
Absolutely. We would like forest waste. We were, again, because of interpret, different interpretations of TRPA's rules, one piece of TRPA says that you can only have biomass material from the basin. But there's another part of the TRPA that says unless you have a biomass plant, then it's waived. We're trying to adhere to the spirit of the law as much as we possible. And again, it was designed to be a problem solution for the area here. But certainly, I think that's part of the responsibility of, of taking that material and being a part of this. It will, again, come down to your one body we would have to pass through. TRPA, as you know, is another body. So I think that discussion will come up, should, again, should we propose the project to move forward. I think it's an excellent discussion to have. Is that available? Should it be in there?
But, but of course, if, if the facility ends up in Cabin Creek, it's not subject to the TRPA rules about importing materials into the-
It's not subject to any TRPA rules should it, should it go there. And I might add, we are also doing projects down the hill. I just didn't put them in here. We've got some big ones at Forest Hill coming up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brett. And again, congratulations both on your personal recognition, but also as a part of the team that got the EPA recognition.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Honorable Chair, Jerry Haas with Placer County Planning Services Division. Here today to present an update, this is going to go forward to, on the Lake Tahoe Basin biomass energy facility. Just to bring you up to speed, the proposal includes a 6,700 square foot primary facility with an attached 4,400 square foot material storage structure. The structures would share a roof, so it would have the appearance when it's completed of a single building. The Placer County Planning Commission will consider a request for conditional use from it to allow for the, for the power facility. Following that, if it's approved by the planning commission, TRPA would then consider a request for approval of a public service project application. And if TRPA approves that one, then we go through one more hurdle. That would be the TRPA, the Placer County Air Pollution Control District also requiring a new source permit for the facility. This is an aerial image of the location on Kings Beach. It's located a block north of Speckled Avenue at the north terminus of Deer Street, about 800 feet east of Highway 267 there. The proposed site lies within Plan Area Statement 026. That's Kings Beach Industrial Commercial Community Plan. And that's the area shown in yellow down here. This is a zone district and it's one of very few in the basin that does allow for power generation. The image on the right is a more detailed aerial image. It shows both the parcels owned by our public partner, Calpico Energy. It's the large parcel, I guess my laser's not showing up on this one, so, well, it's large parcel you see here right in the center, and then the smaller parcel that's bordered by red here. The units you see up here, this kind of this row of units, I'm trying to get it over there for you, sorry, is a backup diesel power generation facility. It was constructed in 1969. However, expansion of that facility on that parcel is not allowable at this time due to the current zoning, which is modest peak conservation. The parcel in red is the subject parcel. It's about 1.3 acres in size. And its primary function right now is access to the larger parcel to the back. So trucks carrying diesel fuel to the power generation facility would enter the site and pass through the smaller parcel on their way up to the parcel in the back. These are some images of the site as it exists today. The top left one is the loneliest tree in Tahoe. Much of this has been disturbed and a portion of it's been cleared, leveled, and gravelled already. This photo up here at the top right is an image of one of the tanker trucks that typically enters the site to provide fuel to the site north of this one. This is a, I'm trying to move on here. Slide's not going. There it is. Preliminary site plan. This thing has been evolving. I'm not sure if this is the final site plan that'll show up on the draft, but it's pretty close. As you can see, the facility would occupy the northeast portion of the site. And the existing truck access would run along the west face of the building there. Trucks loaded with biomass material would enter the site in the same location. They would turn to the left, they'd use this backup area, and then they'd back up into the storage part of the facility, which would be on the east side of the building. The materials then fed into the system through this common wall. It's kind of a wall about two-thirds the way across that building. And it would supply either the burner or the gasifier that would be located toward the southern half of the structure on the left side there. Placer County and TRPA are processing a joint EIR, EIS for the project. The EIR will satisfy CECLA for the county and the EIS will satisfy TRPA code requirements for the project. And due to the federal funding nexus that Brett spoke of, there's also NIPA requirement. And this document is being prepared to satisfy Department of Energy NIPA requirements as This is a list of the environmental issues being analyzed in the EIR, EIS. Of particular concern to neighboring residents, and we found this from the scoping meetings primarily, is the potential for increased truck traffic, noise, and local and regional air quality impacts. In addition, interest groups have also expressed concern over sourcing of the biomass material and its impact on biological resources, air quality, and also greenhouse gas emissions. All of these issues are being analyzed in depth, both at this project site and at the alternative site, which is near Truckee at Cabin Creek Facility. In July, notice of preparation was circulated and was followed up with two public scoping meetings, both of which were held in the Tahoe Basin. At this time, we're awaiting the administrative draft environmental document. It's anticipated that the public draft EIR, EIS would be completed and may be circulated by late spring or early summer. So it's been modified a little bit from this one. When the public draft is available, we will present it to the NITRAC, the Squaw Valley MAC. Also during public comment period, there will be meetings taken, public comments at TRPA Advisory Planning Commission and the TRPA Governing Board. And then finally at the Placer County Planning Commission. This project has generated considerable interest. In response to public scoping meetings late last year, a major component of the environmental document, the alternatives analysis, has been revised. The EIR, EIS is now considering an out-of-basin alternative. The Cabin Creek site I spoke of earlier. And as I mentioned, the environmental issues being analyzed at Kings Beach are also going to be analyzed at Cabin Creek. Although most of the Cabin Creek site is undevelopable due to its use as a landfill, there are some opportunities for development around the perimeter of the site. The proposed location for a facility at Cabin Creek, along with a discussion of potential environmental impacts associated with that development, will be disclosed at the draft EIR, EIS stage. That'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Sina, thank you. So that, that concludes Sina's questions. And I'll open it up to the public for comments or questions. Please come forward and state your name for the record.
Good afternoon, Chair and Board. Ellie Waller, Tahoe Vista, Placer County resident. Today I'm here to discuss a biomass facility in the Tahoe Basin. This is a well-intended project, but site selection of Kings Beach is the wrong place environmentally, ecologically, and economically. A biomass plant located in Kings Beach will endanger a precious congressionally declared outstanding natural resource, Lake Tahoe, and also potentially, I shouldn't even say potentially, will affect local residents and a nearby elementary school. Cabin Creek is the most logical location if such a plant needs to be co-located near the basin. The access road is strategically located to serve Truckee and all eastern Placer County communities. We should be proactively working with the California Air Resources Board to find solutions to the slightly out-of-attainment Cabin Creek zone where the project will work efficiently and effectively as sourced materials are already being collected and processed on location. There is an inconvenient truth. According to Tom Kristoff, Placer County's Air Pollution Control Officer, Cabin Creek's lack of attainment for federal ozone standards does not entirely preclude the site from consideration. And thank you, Mr. Story, for bringing up the potential 90% reduction in emissions. That will also help at that location. The infrastructure for processing the forest materials is already in place, including a diesel-powered grinder and plenty of land area to treat, store, and dry a variety of woody biomass products. Why reinvent the wheel at another location? Additionally, transporting the materials from this location is illogical. The cost savings alone for transportation of materials off-site is another good reason to co-locate this facility at Cabin Creek and avoid additional air quality degradation and potential scenic threshold impact caused by the transportation itself. Just because there are thousands of dollars earmarked for this biomass plant doesn't mean we need to co, we need to locate it in the basin. We need to get away from use-it-or-lose-it mentality for specific funding sources and start lobbying for environmentally sound projects that support the TRPA environmental improvement programs in place to correct the mistakes of the past. I'm curious, why not do this at Cabin Creek? I'd want to avoid the TRPA. And nothing bad about the TRPA. If you can avoid that, it's not a bad thing. Where will the actual power generated by the two-kilowatt facility go? Will it support local Kings Beach or the basin? And does Ascent have previous experience with biomass and developing an EIR, EIS? Thank you.
Hello. Thank you for opportunity to address you. My name is Roger Patchy and I represent Friends of Lake Tahoe. Friends of Lake Tahoe is a recently created 501(c)(4) public benefit corporation. And we were created particularly to oppose the placement of a biomass program, biomass plant in the basin. We're not against biomass. As the previous speaker just commented, we support the location, which Jerry also addressed, at Cabin Creek. It makes all the sense to us. In that context, the organization represents basically a large coalition of local residents, but also in that context, non-resident property owners. And I'm one of the latter groups. We don't vote in the area because we don't live there. And many of us don't live in Placer County. But we do pay taxes and we are impacted. And there's an awful lot of us. I'm also a member of the Board of Directors of Kingswood Village. And so when we talk about the organization representing locals, it also represents, as I mentioned, as non-resident property owners. And we are in large quantity. And we are in condo complexes, HOAs, as well as individual homes. So in that context, we don't want a biomass plant in the basin, not just in Kings Beach, but in the basin in general. And we believe that all the arguments that, that you have and you want to fulfill can be fulfilled with the Cabin Creek location. In that context, to carry on a little bit, I was trying to figure out how to distill down my thoughts into the limited amount of time that I have. And I thought I'd focus on maybe just a couple of topics. And, and one of them has to do with the issue of truth and trust, which has to do with credibility. And the other one has to do with children in that elementary school. But the first one I think is particularly crucial to you in public service. I'm a retired political science professor. I basically believe you guys are overworked and underpaid and unappreciated. And Placer might lead that way because I know your salary's even lower there than elsewhere in the state. But in that context also, what gave rise to this issue about credibility is that when I first heard about this proposal, I took a look at the NOP. And it's pretty standard, except that it's issued by two government agencies instead of one. And it had a part in it that was particularly troubling to me. And I think perhaps could be troubling to you as well because it leads to an issue of credibility. And that was a comment in that NOP that you were partnered, not just you, Placer, but TRPA obviously also partnered, with a number of organizations from University of California Davis to EPA, to California Parks Department, and CAL FIRE, and a whole host of others. Well, you're not. But the NOP still says that you are. It's a government document. It doesn't say I sign under penalty of perjury, but that's the kind of weight that it carries. That gave rise in my mind to a question about credibility and confusion. Can I continue?
Continue.
Thank you. So carrying on with that, with that, that point, then I began to notice, and we began to notice, the organization membership in general, that there is an awful lot of confusion that a biomass plant in general, not necessarily just in the basin, would somehow or the other reduce open burning. And a lot of the graphs in your website are accurate in demonstrating that the pollutants from open burning are terrible. And a combustion plant obviously is enormously better. There's no question about that. But to link a combustion plant as reducing open, open burning is to misunderstand the circumstances because they're not related. It also leads to the conclusion that a biomass plant will somehow or the other magically reduce or rather increase fuel reductions and thereby reducing wildfires. And they're unrelated. But in the public's mind, we've had to sort of decipher these. And consequently, a biomass power plant burns biomass. It'll burn it in Cabin Creek. It'll burn it in North Carolina, South Dakota. It'll burn it in the basin. But it's not going to reduce open burning. And it's not going to reduce wildfires. Not that we wouldn't want to have those things be reduced, but there's not a collateral direct connection. And that's what concerned to us. So consequently, we can see no benefit to putting it in the basin because- So consequently, we can see no benefit to putting it in the basin because of the air inversions. The stuff can't disperse out, where at Cabin Creek, we don't have that problem, so we totally support your effort to put it in Cabin Creek. The other issue has to do with the children. This thing is going to be located, if you put it in Kings Beach, within 1,000 feet of an elementary school. And I just can't imagine a planner, when they have the option of Cabin Creek ever doing that. Not only is Kings Beach one of the more highly-dense population areas in the basin, and of course, a basin is the last place you want to put a plant if you have an alternative because of the air inversions, but the children can't escape it. We already have problems in the valley where kids can't go out and play on certain air pollution days because we don't want their lungs to be contaminated. This thing's going to burn between 25 and 72 tons of biomass. It has to go to Cabin Creek to be processed first. Why truck it? Why truck it back to Kings Beach? You already have it there, and it can be burned, and therefore, the children aren't going to suffer this kind of an impact. And there are chemicals that are emitted from biomass plants that we already know are dangerous. EPA has documents on that. This stuff is not difficult to find, so why would anybody ever run the risk of putting children in danger? And sure, one can argue, look, technology's a lot better today than it was before, and it is, and it will be tomorrow and next week as well, but why would you still run the risk? The Japanese fully believed that their plants were also tremendously safe. And it could also be that 20 years from now, some child may say, oh yeah, I've got this respiratory disease as a result of a biomass plant being located next to where I lived while I was growing up. Now, nobody knew it was me emitting this stuff, but there it was. Or the alternative...
Can I pause you if you could, please?
Thank you. The other alternative is an accident. Biomass plants are notorious for having accidents. There was a big fine levied against two plants in the valley, and sure, the problem can be resolved, the fines can be paid, but if that were to happen at the elementary school, how do you correct the problem in their lungs? And how do you prepare for the lawsuits that will follow due to negligence? Because that's what they would go after you for. And of course, you'd have to pay, which would be passed on to the taxpayers. We would like to avoid that. I support your efforts. I again believe you're overworked and underpaid, and it's just that Cabin Creek, to us, makes so much sense. Thank you for your time, and thank you for the extension.
Is there someone else who'd like to address this? Please come forward and state your name.
Check. My name is Mike Buffon. Thank you for allowing me to speak. And he spoke of next door. I'm actually the closest person that lives to this biomass plant, and I wish I could use Mr. Jerry Hossa's photo. I could actually show you the fence to my house, which was in that photo. So I'm less than probably 50 feet away from where this thing's going to be built, and speaking of the children, I have a 12-year-old daughter and an eight-year-old daughter, and that's what I would appeal to, is your heart as mothers and fathers and children. And like you said, it's less than 1,000 feet from an elementary school. It just does not make any sense. If you can avoid the TRPA and build this thing at Cabin Creek, I mean, that just seems like a slam dunk to me. It just makes total sense, instead of building this right here in a location where, like I said, I'm less than 50 feet away from where this thing's going to be built. Not only that, but the traffic that's going to come up and down that road, that thing's open 24 hours a day, the road's not going to really be able to handle that sort of thing, and my children play right out there. I mean, literally, it drives right by my driveway where I park my cars. And so it just, to build this thing in Kings Beach just does not make any sense when you have Cabin Creek where the stuff's being stored already. It can be built there. They don't have to truck it, like you said. You don't have to deal with the TRPA. You don't have to build it next to an elementary school, next to a highly densely populated area. It just doesn't make any sense to me. And I'm probably the one that's going to be affected the most, living right next door to where this place is. I invite every one of you here on the board to come join me for a cup of coffee at my house, and we'll look at where that's going to be, and then let's go have a cup of coffee up at Cabin Creek and see where that proposed site's going to be. And I think it'll be blatantly clear to you, if you just, honestly, come visit me at my house. Spend 15 minutes. We'll walk up there, look, see where it's going to be, we'll go to Cabin Creek, and you can make the call for yourself. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Buffon? I want to make sure the clerk gets the correct spelling of your name.
Ann Nichols, North Tahoe Preservation Alliance, 40-year resident realtor in Nevada and California. It's N-I-C-H-O-L-S, A-N-N. Anyway, these people have all said, we completely concur with all their opinions, and I just want to let you know that we have above 400 members of the North Tahoe Preservation Alliance, and we all are against this idea. We all live in Brockway or Crystal Bay, and you know, of course, the children, but what about adults with asthma and various breathing problems? So it just seems just crazy. But also, as a realtor, North Tahoe Sierra Board of Realtors, our legal affairs government committee had a presentation, and it's going to be recommended to the board to, they don't even want it in Cabin Creek, so, because of course, a lot of the members are Truckee and Squaw Valley and Alpine Meadows. So please reconsider this. This is a bad idea. Thanks.
Next speaker, please.
Members of the board, my name is Dave McClure from Tahoe Vista. I'm currently today representing the North Tahoe Citizen Action Alliance. Our organization was one of two organizations that submitted comments on the NOP when it first came out. NTCA has been very involved in this issue, has been researching it for months, and has had detailed conversations with Jim Turner and the people operating the Carson City Plant, and continue researching the Tahoe Fire Commission reports and every single report that is going into any of the studies here on this issue. We take it very seriously and are deeply concerned about the misdirection that you are receiving about information on this project. It wasn't too recent that, at a meeting about a month ago, that we argued with Brett Story about the fact that a biomass plant to produce the clean emissions that these plants are designed to produce today, that they're not intended to be burning green material. So that if you produce material in the Tahoe Basin and take it directly to the plant, that it hasn't been screened, so it doesn't meet the fuel specification, four inches, four-inch minus, two-inch minus, depending, it also has not been dried. Jim Turner at Loyalton says it takes 45 to 60 days during the summer to bring the moisture content down to where it can operate effectively in the plant. Cabin Creek is where the material needs to go, and has been going for 16 years, to be processed, screened, okay, and dried, stored. And after the disagreement with Brett, I thought to myself, how ridiculous. There's no disagreement here, because we have seven months of winter, and there's zero production of biomass from the forest for seven months, which means that Cabin Creek has to store at least seven months of supply to be able to truck it back into the Tahoe Basin and burn it all winter long. There is no argument here. Cabin Creek is the only place. It's like locating a biomass plant next to a lumber mill that's producing the wood chips that are being burned in the biomass plant, and that's Loyalton's history. So besides that issue, the only other thing I wanted to say was, about a month ago, there was a meeting of the multi-jurisdictional agency, the MAC, for all the fire departments, conservancy, a few other organizations. And on their agenda was the approval of a strategies report for how to deal with the biomass material in the Tahoe Basin. And it was the Tahoe Conservancy had hired a lady, Tina Carlson, with a PhD, to help the fire districts study this report and encourage them to approve this strategies report at that meeting. We got wind of that report and wrote a detailed analysis of that report, an examination of its data and the whole thing. The number-one recommendation in that report was a biomass plant in Kings Beach. Well, it turns out that the fire chiefs, in their greater wisdom, realized that it might not be such a good idea to be supporting an individual location that hasn't really been figured out right yet. But the point of what I'm bringing up here is that the individual who was in charge of pushing that strategy through to the fire chiefs has a PhD, understands about peer review, understands the difference between facts and marketing data, and after the meeting, she came up to me and said, Dave, I've never even heard of Cabin Creek before. I didn't even know anything about Cabin Creek. This is somebody who's got a PhD on the Tahoe Conservancy and is pushing a strategies document with the number-one recommendation being a biomass plant in Kings Beach. Knew absolutely nothing about the local area logistics, the material, how it has to be screened and prepared before it's burned in a power plant? And this is the kind of energy behind it. So I just wanted to say the same thing, that Cabin Creek is the logical place, there's no question. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. I'm Dwayne Whitelaw, fire chief with North Tahoe Fire District. I've worked with Brett Story for many years, going back to the Angora Fire and the ByState Fire Commission, trying to work together to figure out how we can, in the Tahoe Basin, reduce the hazardous fuels to the point where we're getting closer to fire-safe communities. We've developed community wildfire protection plans throughout the basin, and in Placer County, in our part of the basin plan, there are literally thousands of acres that need to be treated. We rely a lot on state, federal, and local dollars to get these acres treated. And probably the single biggest criticism that we have had from the outside is what it costs us per acre to treat these acres. So my plea to you is, without getting into the specifics of a location, that we need a facility close to Tahoe where we can reduce the cost per acre by reducing the transportation costs of this hazardous fuel that's being treated. So please remember, we have a genuine problem in Tahoe. We need to get rid of the material, and if we can figure out how to do it cost-effectively, that's going to aid us over the years ahead, acknowledging that the dollars are getting harder and harder to come by. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Renee Robert, just like the hockey player, more teeth, Kings Beach. I want to speak in opposition to the Kings Beach location or a location inside the basin because I think it negatively impacts air quality, consequently, water quality, Lake Tahoe clarity. One need look no farther than Mexico City for brown cloud, Reno, Salt Lake, to see the effects of that sort of thing. And also, Kings Beach Elementary, where I learned to read, write, and arithmetic, is what's mentioned, is very close. I think it negatively impacts your tax revenues because property values are likely to decline. Consequently, property taxes will decline. And last point is, I think, the transportation over 267, which is designated as a scenic corridor, would be negatively impacted as well, as people have said. Thank you.
Are there any other speakers who'd like to address this item? Please come forward and state your name.
My name is Richard Ramidis. I'm a Kings Beach resident, have been since 1981. My children were raised there. I think it's a beautiful place. The last thing we need is anything that's going to be running 24/7, 365 days a year in the basin, not just in Kings Beach. I don't want it in Kings Beach, I don't want it in the basin. What we've got is problems right now, we have to deal with, with traffic. 267, yes, we've got a traffic problem. If you run it on speckled, we're going to have a traffic problem. I also live just a couple of blocks on Dolly Varden, away from this proposed site. I don't want the site there, I don't want the noise pollution, I don't want the greenhouse, I don't want to have to deal with anything that's going to poison the basin. What we need to do is try to clean the basin. We've taken gas stations right off that were right on the lake. We didn't want that getting into the lake. We don't want people putting fertilizers on their lawns that are going to go into the lake. What we need to do is keep the lake clean. That means keeping this type of facility with its noise pollution, with its air pollution, with the traffic problems it's going to be causing. We need to keep it out of the basin, and we certainly need to keep it out of Kings Beach. I don't want it in my backyard. I'd like to know which one of you would like it in your backyard. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Are there any other speakers on this item? See none. We will move on to our next item, Public Works, Kings Beach Commercial Core Improvement Project. Peter.
Good afternoon, Chairman and the Board, members of the Board. Glad to be here. Let's see. All right, as you said, Peter Kratz here with Public Works to present an update to you and folks here today on our Kings Beach Commercial Core Improvement Project, sorry, which is Department Item Number 2A, informational item only, no action to be taken by the Board, and then I'll follow it up with Department Item 2B, which will be some actions requested of you today. So with our first item here, informational item, it truly is an honor today to be here to give an update to you on our biggest capital project in eastern Placer County for Public Works. I want to give you some info on where we've been, where we are, and where we plan to go with this project. An overview and giving you a snapshot or a planned view of the project area, just to bring you down to where we are in the world, Kings Beach, and going back in time a little bit, our biggest milestone here recently was getting the environmental document approved, which happened actually way back in January of 2010 with TRPA approval, and then in March of 2010, when Caltrans approved the project with the NEPA document, or the federal document for this project. And from that point forward, the project report was approved, which consists primarily of what's called the three-lane hybrid alternative on Highway 28. What you see there highlighted is obviously the highway near the lakeshore, and then the county roads that will be improved as part of this project, too, that intersect the highway. Since the spring of 2010, what we did as a department is go out with a request for proposal for the detailed design for this project, and during the summer months, went through that process, and then in the fall of 2010, came to your board for your approval, which we gained for approving the consultant team led by Doc and Engineering, which has proceeded with the detailed design efforts for this project. And they have an 18-month schedule that started in October 2010, and they'll proceed all the way through April 2012 to complete the design of this project. So what I want to talk a little bit is how we've kind of broken this project up into phases, kind of three logical phases. The first phase you see up there at the top is being the Neighborhood Traffic Management Plan. The second phase being what's called the Off-Highway Improvements, or the improvements that are on the county roads that are planned. And then Phase 3, the Commercial Core Improvements, or all the improvements on the highway itself. Really, what I highlight in yellow here is based on available future funding. I'll talk a little bit about more funding later in my presentation, but this is assuming all our funding comes into place, you know, by next year, so to speak, so we can roll out the project with this kind of phasing. It may have to get mixed up a little bit, depending on when funding comes forward, and again, I'll talk a little bit about that as we move through the presentation. Phase 1, again, the Neighborhood Traffic Management Plan, is, as you can see here, it's implementing a lot of different traffic calming measures on the county roads primarily, and this summer, and we'll take this to you a little bit later today, the action is a pilot program where we lay out a number of measures, speed humps, traffic circles, a speed feedback sign, a raised crosswalk. All mostly will be temporary, and we'll do it as a pilot effort and monitor how that goes. And then in the following summer of 2012, we'll do the full deployment of the NTMP, is what we call it. This Phase 1, let me back up for a minute. This Phase 1 effort is, again, on the... This Phase One effort is, again, on the, on the neighborhood streets of Kings Beach. And what we will do as part of this pilot project this summer is take the time to see how these measures work on, on the streets. That's why we don't want to do permanent deployment. They will be rubberized recyclable materials that we can take off the streets at the end of the summer. Part of what we want to push for, though, is to do at least one speed hump and at least one traffic circle permanently, and in some locations, or on, probably on Fox Street, and really see how they perform under snow removal operations. It's not a first time, it's been done in other snow country, parts of the country. We'll be working closely with our road maintenance folks to, to see how they work. But we really want to get this in, this, this winter, at least a couple of these features in a permanent sense. Off to Phase Two, what are called the Off-Highway Improvements. Really, here, we're talking about a lot of the improvements that we have on our county roads that come down to the highway, consisting of drainage features, as you can see sidewalks, roadway improvements on those county roads, and then the full deployment of the NTMP, which you see on the right side of the slide. A big part of this is the parking facilities. The intent here and the logic of phasing this project is to do the parking facilities next year, so that when the highway gets built on in subsequent years, people have a place to go to park. And that's kind of part of the logical phasing of this project. And then Phase Three, again, kind of the guts of the project, getting on the highway and doing the three-lane reconfiguration of the highway, putting in the Class II bike lanes, putting in the stormwater infrastructure, which are all parts of the major goals and purpose of this project. There'll also be some right-of-way acquisitions that we'll need along the highway for the intersection improvements at various locations. And now, I just want to spend a few minutes really talking about what we've done since our, since the design phase initiated back in the fall, was a lot of the effort that, with public outreach. A lot of you that's been around with this project in the past, a lot of public outreach, and that hasn't stopped since we started our detailed design. A, a big effort with public outreach. Oftentimes, you get to the detailed design phases of a project, and you just kind of roll forward. But this community is very engaged with this project. I mean, it is a major cornerstone of redevelopment in Kings Beach. And so, we knew that when we did the scope for this project, we wanted to make sure we had folks on the design team that were a big, that were really focused on the outreach to the community. And this is just a snapshot of what we've done in the past with some of the meetings and some of the future meetings that are happening with public outreach. And as I dive into the details, kind of our first, our first meeting, you can see Jennifer there, she's been at every one of our public outreach meetings for this project, which is great. And this was our first meeting back in December, after your board approved the design contract. We got out there to the community, and definitely was some time that passed, but there wasn't a whole lot going on, other than securing the design contract. And boy, we had a great turnout, even though there weren't a lot of actions to talk about with the project, just to say, "Hey, we're moving this project forward, we have the approval to move forward, we have the funding to do the design," and we got a great turnout of folks just hearing that message. And then, as we got into the, more of the nuts of the project, nuts and bolts, Phase One outreach really was, the first meeting we had was on February 2nd, 2011, to talk about, again, this pilot Neighborhood Traffic Management Plan, what it is, how it was designed in, in the environmental document, at least preliminarily, and then explain how it'll get deployed over a two-season period. And really gather community input. There's a lot of criteria for traffic calming measures, where they can go, where they're located with respect to people's driveways. So, there's kind of a standard that's set there, but again, there's ability to move some of these things based on the community input. So, we heard that at that, at that first outreach meeting on the NTMP. And then, later this month, we'll actually come back to the community on April 27th, and talk about the, the feedback we got from the community on these traffic calming measures, where, if they can be adjusted, things like that. And then hopefully, with your board approval later today, we can announce that we're taking this project out to bid for deployment this summer. And then finally, on Phase One, we'll go back in the fall, after we've had the deployment of this pilot NTPMP, we will actually be monitoring traffic flow through there, and we will hear from the community as well, people that live in the community and hear their feedback. And that will help us refine the permanent deployment of the Neighborhood Traffic Management Plan next year. Moving on to Phases Two and Three, which are, again, just to remind you, Phase Two, the county road improvements, and then Phase Three, the highway improvements, we had a meeting back on March 2nd, and with a great turnout as well. And really, had a lot of great displays on what different features could look like, including sidewalks, lamp posts, benches, those kinds of amenities that have always been part of this project in terms of really giving the community a facelift. Obviously, we, our project chosen was, was sidewalks on both sides of the road, where we really have very little of that right now, 10-foot wide. And so, getting into the details of what do you want your sidewalks to look like, how much are they going to cost, obviously, some, you know, from, from Volkswagen to Cadillac style sidewalks, and talking about the O and M, and really getting people to kind of weigh in on paper form what their preferences are. So, when we, we're still collecting those preferences from the community and what they'd like to see. And then, later this month, or not later this month, in May, we'll actually go back to the community on Phases Two and Three, and we're analyzing their input right now on what their preferences are, and come back to them on more information on our detailed design of this project, the engineer's estimate, what the various features will, will cost, depending on, and how that lines up with their preferences for what they'd like to see. And then finally, on outreach, I just want to talk a little bit about, really, what started at the beginning of this project, back in December of 2010. The real, the individual effort on, on going out to the business owners, particularly on the core, and the, and the folks affected by this project. We met with business owners individually to receive their feedback and present our design ideas on how best to meld their properties with the public improvements on the highway. And if you think about it, Highway 28 is pretty flat, you know, one of the things we need to think hard about from an engineering perspective is make sure the drainage off the sidewalks and the frontages in front of people's businesses work with the drainage and how we reconfigure the highway, things of that nature. Where individual business owners want benches and lamp posts, and we even talk about our tart bus shelters that will be built as part of this project, is, is our ability to shift things around to best satisfy the business owner preferences and desires. I should also say that part of this outreach to date, and more recently, we've actually been talking to folks, including the discussion of forming an assessment district, as we've always talked about, so that the improvements such as sidewalks, lamp posts, benches, trash receptacles, et cetera, are adequately maintained. Obviously, the biggest expense with all of this is how the sidewalks are going to be cleared of snow. We know that, we experienced that in Tahoe City. This effort is a, kind of, it's a separate from what we're doing here in the design scope. We're really looking at the North Tahoe Business Association to help lead this effort. We feel like they're a voice for the community. We'll look to them to help develop a request for proposal, to bring on a consultant team that specializes in forming assessment districts. It's something that's very important for a project like this. We're putting a huge investment in the community, and we want to make sure that there's, we've got what's called either a P-Bid or a BAD, a, a Business Assessments District that's formed to maintain all of these improvements that we've built. And then, just a little bit on statistics at the bottom, you know, we've met with 82 of 128 parcels within the project limits as of March 21st. And we were out there daily, I think, talking to the community on, and particularly the business owners. And, and my conclusion on all of our outreach for this project to date is that it's really exceeded our expectations. Like I said, when you get into detailed design, you usually don't get this kind of interaction, but it's a big deal for Kings Beach. And I would say up to 100 or more community folks would come out to our meetings and interact with these meetings. And I really, I want to just highlight and credit the Dawkins Consultant Team, which includes the outreach folks, Streamline Consulting out of Truckee, and the individuals, Teresa May-Dugan, which is, is just here today, right behind me, and her partner, Amelia Vacca. They're both out of the North Shore area, they have a long history with this project. They are a clear voice for the community, I believe, too, and they work well at the NTBA. And then, just a final note, a little bit on the audience, it's interesting, the audience that we got for the Neighborhood Traffic Management Plan meetings were really folks that live on these back streets, that they say, "Oh yeah, we know this was a mitigation measure for your project," but the reality is, we have safety problems on our streets today. As you probably know, we have narrow streets in Kings Beach, we have a big population that walks those streets. And they said, "Boy, this is great, we can, this, this helps address those issues today with our, our proposed NTMP." And then, when we went into the amenities workshops, the sidewalks on the core and all that, we really got, it was more the business owner community, because obviously, those are the folks that are going to benefit from those types of improvements. Stepping off all of that outreach, I just want to talk a little bit about funding, it's, it's important with any project we do. And I just want to say a few things, it's a point in time. It's our estimated construction funding shortfall is in the area of 13 million, which is right there. And really, what this table highlights, I've kind of presented this to you before in the past, but it's been, it's a bit updated, a little, a little bit more information for you folks. And that is that, really highlighting again, all the partners for this project, and all the different local, state, and federal funding sources that we have in play. I should note that the top of the, the funding spreadsheet is Redevelopment Agency. We came to your board just a couple of weeks ago, approving this $11 million commitment. You know, we've already spent some of those dollars to date doing two public parking lots for, that's part of this project, what's called the Brook, and the middle parking lots. Additional, the rest of that 11 million, we'll be, we'll really be focused on additional parking lots, streetscape amenities for the project. And then, moving down, just talking about, or looking at all the, mainly state and federal sources that are coming into play, showing you that we've really secured over 32 million to date. We've spent about 12 million on various things, including the parking lots, the previous environmental efforts, and then the committed design contract, which is about $4.6 million. And I just, I guess I want to make a few more points on this slide. And I said this before, as we phase this project, there may be adjustments to make sure the goals and purpose of the project are met. And that is, the highway improvements may end up going for first, or part of a mix of the county road improvements, just because this is an uncertainty right now. You know, when we're going to actually reduce this funding gap right now, I, I can't tell you today. You know, until, as with many public projects, until it's shovel-ready, do we tend to see more funding flow? And all, a good example is in Supervisor Yular's district with the Aubrey Folsom Road Project. That project has been phased, and not until a phase was actually shovel-ready, did we really see the funding flow for that project. And I kind of see that with this project. What's important today is that the project design is fully funded, the Phase One Neighborhood Traffic Management Plan is fully funded. And once we complete the design for the major on- and off-highway improvements, our goal will be to have the funding gap reduced. I realize the long effort by the community, and I appreciate your board's ongoing support of this project. The department may ask for additional patience, patience of everyone here, as we cannot guarantee when all needed funding will be secured. But I think the main thing is, is we get that design done, so we are truly shovel-ready and look for every opportunity we can to reduce that funding gap, and deliver the project that the community always has anticipated to receive. And then finally, just another funding sheet, that's just really a broad sheet that shows a, a summary activity table on how the major tasks are delineated by costs. I should say that the design activity represents costs that go all the way back to 2002, at $9 million. And 4.6 million of that is dedicated to the detailed design that started back in the fall of 2010. And then, this design number is, is what we know today for the construction cost, the 33 and a half million. It's come down a little bit from previous costs, we're at about a 30% design level on this project right now. So, whether that number will go up or down, it's hard to say. I should say that, you know, we're still, we've got some funding out there that we have dedicated to right-of-way. We don't need all the right-of-way funding, we can actually help reduce that $13 million gap. If we have, we have a 25% contingency, construction contingency in this number right now, so that number could go down as we get a higher, a level of design cost estimate. And so, with that, I'll leave you with all, with that information, and happy answering questions you might have about where we are right now.
Thanks, Peter. Appreciate it. Jack?
Yeah, thanks, Peter, very much. A lot of, a lot of information, appreciate the outreach and everything you've done, the department's done. I, I'm not necessarily concerned about, you know, 13 million from a, from a, I guess, a 30,000-foot view. I guess what I need to know is that there's a strategy to, to obtain that.
I get, I think the strategy is kind of what I talked a little bit about Supervisor Grant, and that is, we're still just at a 30% design level right now, and so I see, we've got a pretty steep contingency, we've got some funding out there that's dedicated for certain things that we might, as time goes on, be able to rededicate towards construction. And so, that's part of the strategy in, in reducing that funding gap.
And I think you've hit it for me, because by telling me that you have only 30% design, I, I understand the, you know, the, the closer you get to a full design, the more certainty you're going to have with the actual price. So, thank you.
Sure.
And thanks to everybody who has been involved in this process. The meetings have been great, as compared to a lot of the earlier meetings that were very contentious in years past, and the meetings we've had, whether it's been on the Neighborhood Traffic Management Plan, or the specific design pieces as it relates to the actual Kings Beach Commercial Core Improvement Project itself on the highway. Tons of people have turned up, even people who had at one point been opposed to the very idea of the project are now willing to pitch in and work with other members of their community to, to make sure that we do this right, and, and that we do it for the benefit of the community. And, and that was, that was really great to see. You know, it's really rewarding to, to have people who have been opposed to something now signing on to it and saying, "Let's make this happen, and let's make it happen right." So, kudos to you, to your team, to Teresa and Dawkins, and of course, to the NTBA, because they have done a lot of the heavy lifting on making that communication with, with the community. One thing that I wanted to point out specifically on the one-to-one outreach to the business owners is, and please correct me if I'm wrong or misstating this, it, it's my understanding that you did also collaborate a little bit with RDA in terms of talking to the business owners about what opportunities existed through the RDA side of, of this proposal, such as facade improvements, things, things that a lot of these business owners weren't even aware were available. Can you touch on that a little bit?
Yeah, a, a little bit is, I think our, our design team is going out there and making sure that they know about these other opportunities. And I think there actually have been some calls and back and forth between RDA staff folks and business owners about low-cost loans for furniture improvements. And so, we're trying to make sure that business owners know what, what's available out there for them. And, and also to note that, you know, without me going, reaching out there too far, I mean, it's, it's my understanding, too, as we do our right-of-way improvements in that 80-foot of right-of-way on the highway, that to the extent that we have to meld things out beyond that right-of-way to make the business owners, make the melding occur, call it, you know, the physical melding, the, the sidewalk work or whatever, we have the ability to use public funds to do that, to the, to the extent that it's, it's, you know, they're, they're being impacted, they're, they're on that, that right-of-way line doesn't become just a strict kind of boundary, so to speak. And I think we looked at it maybe different in the past with projects like the Tahoe City Urban Improvement Project. So, we are getting out there and making sure people know about that. And I, I don't know about all the follow-up meetings that have particularly occurred between RDA staff and folks, but we're getting out the, that word out as best we can.
And the upshot of that really is that, you know, we'll not only have a great-looking streetscape and a great-looking sidewalk and all of that, but many of these businesses will, at the same time, be able to really elevate their own appearances and, and add to sort of the whole, you know, floating of the, of the boat, you know, every, I just, I just think it's a really terrific process. I did want to address, you know, the fact that some of these costs go back to 2002. It has been a very long, drawn-out process. I have heard a number of people say, "Gosh, you know, what the heck is taking the county so long?" And what's taking the county so long is public input, is making sure that the community had their voice heard, and that we went through all the appropriate steps. Now, were there things that could have happened or not happened that would have made this process shorter? Yes, but many of those were not in the control of the county lawsuits, things, things to those effects. So, you know, it's been a very long process, but it's a process that was absolutely inclusive, really listened to the voice of the community. And as you pointed out today with our schedule looking forward, it's going to continue to listen to the voice of the community. And again, just all due respect to you, and my deepest thanks, because you've really done an incredible job here.
You bet. You're welcome. Yep, glad to be here.
Why don't we go ahead and take up B? And then, I will open it up to public comment before we take any action.
You bet. Sounds great, Chairman.
So, everybody understands that.
Okay, great. So, I'll move on to Item 2B, which is an action requested of you today, your board, and move on to my notes here real quick. As we discussed in the previous item, the department is prepared to move the, what's called the Phase One Neighborhood Traffic Management Plan effort of the Kings Beach Commercial Core Improvement Project forward by asking your board approval today of four items, as listed in your board memo, and I'll go through them quickly. Number one, approve the project plans and specs, specifications- Number one, approve the project plans and specs specifications for use in bidding and construction of the Pilot Neighborhood Traffic Management Plan. Number two, authorize the department to advertise for bids. Number three, adopt a resolution authorizing the Director of Public Works with County Council and Risk Management approval to award and execute the Pilot NTMP, Construction Contract Number 1111, to the lowest responsible and responsive bidder in an amount up to $250,000. And then finally, number four, authorize the Director of Public Works to approve and sign contract change orders up to an amount not to exceed 10% of the lowest responsible bidder's approved cost. And what I'll do, just in terms of background, real quickly, is show you a planned view of the NTMP, give you a little bit more detail than the previous item to show. This is the full deployment back on the grid streets that show not only speed humps and traffic circles, but sidewalks, too, that are part of this plan, that will be part of what's called the Phase Two or the full deployment. And really to show or make sure we've got pedestrian connectivity throughout the grid, at least almost a couple of blocks, in terms of where you live within the grid, and to provide connection to the existing school where we have a sidewalk right there that we would connect to, and then have three north-south sidewalk connectors to the highway. This also includes, like I said earlier, a raised crosswalk. And a big thing in terms of public feedback on this is, it'll go in just immediately as a permanent feature, are these gateway entry features, and they tend to be off the highway, here on Speckled, here on Dolly Varden, and here on Beaver. And I'll take you back for a moment and just talk briefly about really what all this means and why it was required as part of this project. This really was a mitigation measure tied to the project, an environmental document based on future forecasted increase in cut-through traffic because we're reconfiguring the highway, really to meet the goals and purpose of the project, which is to increase pedestrian mobility and safety, provide for better stormwater infrastructure along the highway, and really improve the amenities along the highway as well. And like I said, it's a dual benefit, because the community sees these things as something that they'd like to have today before traffic potentially increases down the road through their streets. The project is environmentally cleared, it's fully funded, and then just a couple of slides to show you, not a good comparison, but this really hones in on the measures of the NTMP that we're asking for your approval today, which is really, again, the speed humps up here that are in blue, four traffic circles, and one gateway feature. And that gateway feature is permanent, and really the talk is, what do people want it to look like? And they've got pictures of various types, whether it's a big couple of granite boulders or it's a monument of some sort. The idea, again, behind that calming feature, it's not a, it's not like the feature that we put in on Highway 28 a couple of years ago. It's, you make that turn off of 267 into Kings Beach, and all of a sudden, you see this boulder, it says Speckled Avenue, or it says Kings Beach Community. It's to make sure drivers know that, hey, you're entering a neighborhood. It's not a highway. It's, and it's going to narrow the roadway a little bit to go, okay, I need to be going slow through here. So that's the reason for that feature. So with that, these are just a couple of, this is the title sheet for the plan set that will be hopefully signed by Chairman Wiegand, and a couple of sheets of what a traffic circle looks like as part of this Pilot NTMP, and a detailed sheet on the speed humps as well. So with that, ask for your approval of this item and happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions on this? Okay, I'm going to open it up to the public then and can address generally the project or any of the specific actions that are before items one through four. Seen none, I'll bring it back to the board for correction.
All right. Just like a little direction from County Council here. Should we take these individually, or can we take them, you know, one through four?
I think we take all together.
Okay. Excellent. All right. Then I move the Board of Supervisors approve the project plans and specifications for use in bidding and construction of the Kings Beach Commercial Core Improvement Plan, Pilot Neighborhood Traffic Management Plan, Phase One. We authorize the department to advertise for bids. We adopt a resolution authorizing the Director of Public Works with County Council and Risk Management's review and approval to award and execute the Kings Beach Commercial Core Improvement Plan, Pilot Neighborhood Traffic Management Plan, Phase One. Construction Contract Number 1111 to the lowest responsible and responsive bidder in an amount up to $250,000. And last, we authorize the Director of Public Works to approve and sign contract change orders up to an amount not to exceed 10% of the lowest responsible bidder's approved cost.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to approve staff recommendations, as so eloquently articulated. Before we do that, again, I just want to thank staff, Peter and the community, Jennifer, redevelopment folks who aren't here, but the template of this for me was the King, or excuse me, the Tahoe City project, and so I just encourage you to continue to seek that public input and outreach, but also bring that back to the board, because down in Tahoe City, we came close to having a project that was significantly less than the dramatic improvements that we now have and enjoy, and the impact on the community is just astounding to me. So I look forward to the best. It's been a fun project to work on. Look forward to the results, but good luck and thank you. So with all of that, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And do we have any closed session, Tony?
The board will not meet in closed session. There's no need to meet in closed session, so the item that appears on Page Two, Item Four, will not occur. So we're done.
So the board will adjourn for the day, and we will reconvene here tomorrow morning at 9:00 AM.